The August 8th, 2023 meeting of the St. Joseph County Council is now called to order. Clerk, will you please take the attendance?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
President?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Here in person.
All in person, all in attendance.
Thank you. Let the record show that eight members are present in person. One member, Mr. Schetzel, is present online. Next, will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, which will be given tonight by Councilman Randy Fig.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We just thank you. They allow us to be here at this meeting. Thank you. They allow us to conduct business for St. Joe County. I pray you give us wisdom and our votes and things that we discussed this evening. And we ask you things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Fig. Next up is petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules tonight to put Bill Number 101-23 on tonight's agenda. It was inadvertently left off due to a scrivener's error. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that the motion was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Therefore, Bill Number 101-23 will be added to tonight's agenda after Bill Number 73-23. Any other petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters?
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and put the Save Clay Schools resolution on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to put the Save Clay resolution on the agenda tonight. Any council discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll with the note that this requires a unanimous vote to pass?
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
No? Mr. Catanz-Rite?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
It passes seven two, but it...
Let the record show that the vote failed by a vote of seven to two as it required a unanimous decision by the council. Any other petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters? Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Root. Given that we have remote participation, we need to note for the record that eight of the members who in roll call indicated that they were here present are here physically, and Mr. Schetzel is remote. We also have to identify the platform by which Mr. Schetzel is participating. It's Zoom. We also need to identify the platform by which any members of the public are observing or participating. That is also Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any further petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters? Hearing none, we'll move on to St. Joseph County Board Appointments. We have none this month. We'll move on to report from county auditor.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Report from the county commissioners.
No reports.
Thank you, Mr. Baxmeyer. Report from any special committee of the council. Seeing none, we'll move on to first readings. Clerk, will you please read our first bill?
Bill Number 102-23, in ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place. Petitioners: Harold T. Coleman and David Pruitt, Jr.
Thank you. Bill Number 102-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill Number 103-23, in ordinance to provide property tax relief for qualifying homeowners in St. Joseph County. Amy Drake, petitioner, St. Joseph County Council.
Bill Number 103-23 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee?
Bill Number 105-23, in ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154, land usage of St. Joseph County Code regarding fences and accessory structures. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Bill Number 105-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee? That concludes first reading for tonight. Next up is resolutions.
Bill Number 104-23, a resolution of the Council of St. Joseph County, Indiana, honoring and commending the St. Joseph County Bar Association on its 150th anniversary for leadership and services in furtherance of justice and the rule of law. Petitioner, Amy Drake.
Thank you. Petitioner?
This is a resolution of the Council of St. Joseph County, Indiana, honoring and commending the St. Joseph County Bar Association on its 150th anniversary for leadership and services in furtherance of justice and the rule of law. Whereas in 2023, the St. Joseph County Bar Association celebrates 150 years as an organization of law professionals, and it is committed to justice, high ethical standards of its members, and quality legal services within St. Joseph County, Indiana. And whereas the St. Joseph County Bar Association is the oldest county lawyer organization in the state of Indiana, and has a history of outstanding accomplishments, including the urging and creation of a federal district court in the northern part of the state of Indiana, with its seat in South Bend, a leadership role in the early unification of the Indiana Bar Association as a statewide program, and in improving the delivery and standards of legal services to the public. And whereas the St. Joseph County Bar Association was also leader within the state of Indiana in creating the standards and processes later adopted by the state of Indiana for the qualifications of lawyers throughout the state of Indiana, and in implementing programs for no-cost civil law legal services to low-income persons. And whereas the St. Joseph County Bar Association in recent years created novel programs such as Ask a Lawyer and Free Fridays to expand and broaden its commitment to low- or no-cost legal services within St. Joseph County. And whereas the St. Joseph County Bar Association is currently comprised of around 500 members who represent the diversity of St. Joe County's lawyer population. And whereas on October 21st, 2023, the St. Joseph County Bar Association will officially recognize its 150-year-old history of outstanding dedicated service to the principles of justice and access to the courts. Now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council as follows. Section 1, on behalf of all the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, the St. Joseph County Council hereby commends, congratulates, and thanks the St. Joseph County Bar Association, its officers and members upon their 150th anniversary of providing leadership and services in furtherance of justice and the rule of law within the St. Joseph County and within the state of Indiana. Section 2, the St. Joseph County Council expresses its gratitude to the St. Joseph County Bar Association for its past and present leadership in all legal matters and wishes its continued success. And Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the St. Joseph County Council.
Thank you. Is there a motion on that bill?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Catanz-Rite. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on Resolution 104-23? Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
President Root? Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Resolution Bill Number 104-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. My congratulations to those members of the St. Joseph County Bar and to the bar as a whole.
Thank you.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Did the president want to say anything to us or not?
What?
Did the president want to say anything to us?
He wanted what?
Did the president of the bar want to say anything to us?
Oh, yeah. Did the president of the bar want to make a statement? You're free to. You don't have to, but you're free to.
Thank you for this recognition. We look forward to continuing to serve the community for the next 150 years.
Thank you. That concludes resolutions. Next up are salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 96-23?
Bill 96-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, Commissioners.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Mr. President Root, Bill Number 96-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
President Root, is this dealing with the fleet manager?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, this is a process we started a year and a half ago, looking at the ways to improve county government, the way we spend money, the way we track mileage, the way we track expenses for all the vehicles. We've had a couple things that we've looked into of having a company helper on our fleet, but it's to the point where we have, we're asking for a fleet manager to consolidate everything. There's a lot of the vehicles. I think you guys have had the data presented to you of the number of cars we have, the number of take-home vehicles, and we need to get a better handling of the mileage, the gas consumption, and all that that comes with it. And by hiring a fleet manager, that'll give us that part of it in addition to all the other cars that county has, that we know where our cars are going, when they're going, how much fuel, and all the other costs associated with that.
Thank you.
And Ryan is here to answer any questions you have about...
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 96-23. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak against? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against? Seeing no one, the public hearing on this bill is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
I have a question for Ryan. Ryan, I know you presented to us at our committee meeting, but is there any information or data you'll be able to share with us during this budget process that will be valuable to us in terms of anything you might be able to collect between now and the end of our budget process in October?
Um...
Not tonight, obviously, but... Will there be any financial data that we could use in our budget process that you might be able to share with us?
Yeah, I believe so.
That would affect the 2024 budget?
Yeah, and we've been gathering a lot of information on these vehicles. We've got, we now have, you know, total costs of all these vehicles. We can look at any vehicle on the sheet and see what it cost us. We'll be gathering maintenance data over the next couple of months, and that'll give us a better idea of what they're costing us. So I can give kind of some initial figures on vehicles, but not the total picture. That'll come...
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 96-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is Bill Number 98-23.
Bill 98-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, Health Department.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Bill Number 98-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hi, Amy Rupee, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor, and we are requesting appropriation for the next cycle of the Immunization Coag Grant. It did start July 1st, and it goes through June 30th of 2024, and it is in the amount of $637.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 98-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 98-23 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Tanner, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 98-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is Bill Number 99-23?
Bill 99-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, Health Department.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Bill Number 99-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
We are entering year three out of the three-year grant that we received from the Center for Disease Control. This funds our community health workers that we have deployed in our county, and it is in the amount of $1,142... Excuse me, $142,937.50.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on 99-23 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilwoman Catanz-Rite. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 99-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is 100-23?
Bill Number 100-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, Health Department.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Bill Number 100-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
This is the third year that we will be receiving this grant, and it is a supplemental grant to our Immunization Coag Grant that was heard two ordinances ago. This one is in the amount of $324,511.34, and it also runs July 1st of this year to June 30th of 2024.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the council?
I have a question, President Root.
Councilman Schetzel?
Amy, I had asked you in committee about how we get, how we record permission from parents on immunization. Do you remember that question?
Yes.
Can you explain that one more time, please?
We have to have the guardian in person to sign the waiver. If it is a school event that we're going to, they go online to our electronic forms process that we have. It's called FRIJA, where they have to sign off on us vaccinating their child before we do any vaccination. So it can be done electronically through FRIJA or in person with a paper consent. And that's for all vaccinations, for anyone 18 or younger.
Okay, so no child gets a vaccination without written parental consent, either online or handwritten, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Mr. Drake?
So with, when you do a sign-off on that, is that, is that for, is that a blanket, like, for the whole year? Is it per instance?
It's per, per instance. It doesn't cover anything past whatever date we're going to vaccinate their child for, and what vaccinations. The nurse has discussed with the parent or guardian ahead of time.
Thanks.
Any further council discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill 100-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak against? The public hearing on Bill Number 100-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to pass.
Second.
A motion to pass was made by Councilman Schetzel. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 100-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is Bill Number 73-23?
Bill Number 73-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, Ducom Center.
Committee report, please.
Bill Number 73-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. Randy Squadrone, Financial Coordinator, Ducom Center, 4161 Lathrup Street, South Bend. The Ducom Center is currently experiencing high turnover with our personnel due to better-paying jobs in the marketplace. With the low unemployment rate and lower wages paid to the Ducom employees, we are experiencing a difficult time hiring qualified personnel. Due to the lack of personnel for adequate coverage, we are having employees work many hours of overtime to cover since we are a 724-hour operation. Today, we are requesting to eliminate an executive director's position that hasn't been filled for several years in our Grant Fund 9125. With the additional funds, we are requesting to increase the hourly rate of our employees. We are also requesting to eliminate a part-time dietary aid position in the Project Income Fund 9127, in order to increase these employees' hourly rate like those in the grant to accommodate all classifications equally. As a result, we are hoping to reduce the number of open positions as well as reduce our overtime and turnover within the center. I will also add that this is revenue-neutral.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
I have a question, President Root.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes, sir. So these two positions that you mentioned, that you have not filled for a while or will not be filling, executive director and part-time dietary aide, do you foresee any moment in the next year, any time in the next year, when you would want to fill those positions?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question. You know, we're in budget season right now, and I think I asked you this. I just forgot how you answered. But we are in budget season right now, and this does seem to me like a question we should be answering within the budget process. Could you explain to me why you think it's important we deal with this now rather than, you know, during the budget process, which we're actually in the midst of?
Well, for many reasons. We hope to reduce our turnover by doing it now versus the budget seizing, and we also hope to reduce our overtime. Some of our employees are, been working overtime for, I would say, many months, almost years, and they're experiencing some burnout. So by doing it sooner than later would be, would be better at this point in time. And again, we're hoping to fill positions and, and help, help, help our employees during this process.
Okay, so you want to solve this now rather than wait for a 2024 budget to solve the problem?
The overtime has gone on, been going on for many, many months and years, I would say. And some of these employees, if you're, if in a bi-weekly period, you're looking at 75 hours, some of these employees are putting as many as 140 hours in, 145 hours during that timeframe. To cover.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill Number 73-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed on this bill. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for passage. Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilman Catanz-Rite. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 73-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is the bill that we earlier added to the agenda, Bill Number 101-23. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Bill 101-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the being, as said, in the ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Department 0018 Prosecutor.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Bill Number 101-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Risenhoover, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here this evening to ask for a salary amendment and appropriation for a FSSA grant to pay the salaries of the Adult Protective Services Department in the Prosecutor's Office. We're asking for the first year, it's a two-year grant. The first year is $469,133. And the second is, second year is the same amount for a total of $938,266. There's no match required for this grant.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Likewise, online, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing on Bill 101-23 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
I did have a question for the petitioner. Mr. Risenhoover?
Yes, sir.
So the increases we see in these different salary categories, are those mandated by the state or required?
No.
No?
No.
Just a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It's 3%.
Thank you.
Except for the director, and he's at 5%.
Understood. Thank you.
Any further counsel discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 101-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
That concludes our salary amendment for tonight. Next up is our public hearing and public comments on fiscal matters. All fiscal matters were heard and discussed at our July committee meeting. And so, tonight, we will move directly to the public comment and the vote. So, is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of anything on tonight's fiscal, bill concerning the fiscal matters? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to any of the items in the fiscal matters bill? Likewise, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number 95-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilwoman Thomas. Any further counsel discussion on 95-23? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill 95-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our fiscal matters for tonight. Next up is land use planning. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 92-23?
Bill 92-23, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalizationary have been met and declaring resolution number R16-23 of the St. Joseph County Council, declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution. Petitioner, Edco LLC.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 92-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Terry O'Brien, Economic Development Planner for the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. My office is on the 11th floor. The petitioner coats light gauge galvanized steel and aluminum coils for the building material industry. The petitioner plans to add approximately thirty thousand square feet to its current building at an estimated cost of $4.75 million and to invest approximately $14 million in new machinery, equipment, and tooling. This project allows, helps Edco retain its current workforce of eighty-seven employees, and they anticipate the expansion will allow them to create forty additional jobs at an average wage of $28 an hour before benefits. The staff is recommending a six-year real property tax abatement and a five-year personal property tax abatement. And I have the plant manager here to answer any questions if you might, if you might have any.
Would you like to just tell us a little bit about the project?
Yes, sir. We, we're going to install a second fifty-four inch line. That line will run, we're working through the final details, three hundred foot a minute. Our existing line is thirty inches wide, so we're going to go wider and be able to get into some different markets, in specifics, the L cart market, as well as some additional building products and so forth. Because we are going to take up some of our current storage space, we're going to need that additional thirty thousand square feet just to work through that. Fortunately, we had three of the council members come out this last week. Unfortunately, the strip broke right before they got there, and they didn't get to see it run. So, I'd invite you back to see it run. Most of what we do is residential building products. Siding, garage door, steel roofing, gutter fascia, soffit, all of that. And then, we do some specialty products as well. This wider line will generate some additional diversification of our products and our customer base.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Jeff Williams, General Manager of Edco. I live on Evans Drive in Light.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll open to public hearing on Bill number 92-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Mr. Root?
Yeah, Mr. Katanzright? Councilman Shetzel?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Williams, I just wanted to say, I would love to have joined the other three council members, but it was a long flight from London to get there, so I did not. I, I'm really interested in what you do there, and are you, when, when we, can you tell me the, the finished products, where would, where would I find those in the community?
You would find them on various people's houses. We paint material for, that actually goes into Lowe's. It actually goes via Pennsylvania, believe it or not. Most of the products that we produce, you're never going to see our name on it. So, you may be going to Lowe's and getting trim coil or downspout or gutter fascia. You may be ordering a Midland garage door, a North Central garage door, a Haas garage door, a Horman garage door. That would all be painted in our facility. Probably the easiest product to find, and it's not what we do all the time. If you went to Costco and bought a Nordic wear cookie sheet for the last three or four years, it was all painted. We still paint the women's Venus razor, and we used to paint the men's Gillette Fusion razor. So, we do a little bit of everything. We're just kind of behind the scenes and just do our thing. Indiana is the largest concentration of coil lines in the country. There is a new line going in in Terre Haute down, and it's part of SDI. Newport and Crawfordsville is getting ready to put a line in as well.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further counsel discussion? Did we do the public hearing already? We did the public hearing, didn't we?
I interrupted.
Yeah, we're up to the motion. So, we're ready?
I interrupted you to let you.
So, let's do the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Or in opposition? Seeing no one, may I have a motion on Bill number 92-23?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilwoman Drake. It was seconded by Councilman Fig. Any further counsel comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 92-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is Bill number 93-23?
Bill number 93-23, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and declaring resolution number R12-22 of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution. Petitioner, Max Plastics, Inc.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 93-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Terry O'Brien again. The petitioner is a startup company. After a number of years working in the plastic industry, the founder decided to bring together a group of former employees that he had spent time with over the years to start his own company. The petitioner purchased the former United Conveyor Facility along McKinley Highway in Mishawaka and plans to invest approximately $5 million in manufacturing equipment. The capital investment is expected to create twenty-five new jobs this year, and if his business plan is successful, he anticipates the potential to add an additional hundred employees in between now and 2025. Staff is recommending a five-year personal property tax abatement. There is no abatement for the real property since he is using a existing facility, no expansion. I do have the founder here, if you have any questions you'd like to ask him.
Sure. Would you like to come forward and give us a, a brief description of the project? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Christian Stankwitz, Max Plastics CEO and founder at 13077 McKinley Highway in Mishawaka. Yeah, as Terry said, we started this company last year as a startup company in the plastics industry. We're going to be doing rotationally molded products. Familiar products for this region of the world is holding tanks and water tanks for the RV industry, seat backs for the marine industry, and then, we're looking to get into custom products, both in the fuel, outdoor sports, kayaks, coolers, or things that you'd be familiar with in our industries.
Thank you. Any question from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? And likewise, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number 93-23 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilwoman Drake. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further counsel discussion?
Mr. Root?
Mrs. Drake?
I just want to say thank you for choosing St. Joe County to start your company. Thank you for touring us this week, and also to Edco, thank you for expanding in St. Joe County, for touring us. That's all.
Thank you. Any further counsel discussion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 93-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. Next up is unfinished business. Next up is new business. Next up is old business. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 23, 2023 special meeting and the July 11, 2023 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you. The minutes are approved by a vote of nine to zero. Next up is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes to any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and again, you have three minutes to address the council.
Totally understand that. My name is Thomas Rowe, 26160 Lakeland, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. My new business is not on the agenda for tonight, actually is the manual and rules and regulations of St. Joseph County Council. As I've researched it, the last time this was revised was April 14 of 1997. When I go into this, as I've thoroughly read it several times, I encourage constituents to read it too. Under the rules and regulations of St. Joseph County Council, be it resolved that the powers of office be performed justly and faithfully. Point B, the services of the county government be provided efficiently and equitably. Point C, that in matters of public concern, there should be a maximum participation to inform and submit general opinion to achieve wise and timely action. Number D, the intent of the council's actions always be interpreted in the favor of openness, efficiency, and orderliness. From there, I move on. I've seen in recent times in newspaper articles, and I'm not going to mention anybody's name, equity has started to have a real negative connotation. Equity is defined, I've researched it different ways, equity is the quality of being fair and impartial. So, I hope people note that, okay? I don't come up here to spend my time uselessly. Now, the other thing is, when I've been researching in the order of business, privilege of four, limit to three minutes or less, I see nothing in here as far as rules and guidelines where questions cannot be asked. We can make comments, but I have not seen anything in these rules and regulations. So, I'm going to ask for a response later time. I know I don't get the questions answered now, that's quite obviously. But I would like some clarification on different things. If not, who do I go to? I'm your constituent. That's it. Thank you. I got it under three minutes, didn't I?
Mr. O'Brien, would you like to address the three-minute rule?
Sure. So, the three-minute rule is, it's not a statutory requirement. It's something that's part of the rules. It is limited to three minutes for items not on the agenda. As the gentleman indicated, his recitation of the initial part of the statement of intent, that the council actions operate in favor of openness, efficiency, orderliness, and timeliness. The council certainly has discretion on how to manage the three minutes per person. Historically, there has not been a give and take during the privilege of the floor. I believe primarily to make sure that things move orderly and efficiently so that everyone can have an opportunity. If we have thirty people that want to speak for three minutes, and a couple of folks are having back and forth with council members, it might squeeze out people that are 29th and 30th on the list. Certainly, the council has the discretion to amend these rules at any time, and noting that they were last compiled in 97, it might be something to take up after budget season.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Root?
Uh, Mr. Katanzright?
So, on that notion, I mean, there probably should be an amendment already made from what was adopted last month about remote participation, and that, that should be a change in the rules, shouldn't it?
Right, and, yes, Mr. Katanzright, you're right. And in that resolution, there was a reference to where it would be inserted into the rules. The rules have not been retyped and recompiled, but it, if you look at that resolution, it referenced a specific provision where it would fall within there.
Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, President Root and members of the council. Peter J. Agostino, Attorney at Law, with offices at 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here on behalf of Save Clay, Inc. This is an organization which is a not-for-profit organized under Indiana law. Its eight board members are here present and may speak to you. Earlier this evening, too, we had an opportunity to speak with Linda Rogers regarding the issue that's before you, which is a resolution that I submitted yesterday for consideration. I appreciate Councilwoman Drake trying to have this on the agenda tonight. However, there, it wasn't my intent to try and rush this through. My intent was to get this council to start looking at a very serious problem. Fifty-five thousand residents in St. Joe County in unincorporated areas, and we're going to be left with no school that South Bend is supposed to be providing, no public school in those areas. That, there's something wrong with that. There's something wrong with that, too, when forty to fifty percent of the tax dollars supporting the school come from unincorporated area and no school to serve that community. And so, this resolution asks you to support an effort by Save Clay, Inc. to have the Secretary of Education looking into whether or not there should be some new district formed for providing public school education in the unincorporated area, which is not, is, appears to be getting abandoned by the South Bend schools. And also asks you to look into this issue of the finances. It's hard to get straight answers, frankly, from the South Bend schools about what money's coming in. The $220 million referendum, $35 million of that is going to be spent away on interest for borrowing. Where is the other money going to? Why do South Bend schools receive more money than any other school in this area, more than any charter school, more than Penn, more than New Prairie, and has the lowest performance? So, where is the money going? It affects your taxpayers. It affects me. Fifty percent of my tax bill goes to South Bend schools. So, I'd appreciate this resolution moving along, getting cosponsored or sponsored by members, and getting on an agenda for future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so the public is aware that this bill will be heard and discussed by the council at its committee meeting at the end of the month here in August, I believe, August 22. And I, I would imagine that coming out of that committee meeting, it will be forwarded for a public vote at the September 11 meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Smith of Brackenfern Drive, Clay Township. I'm a proud member of Save Clay and Save Our Schools. Although we are a group of eight board members, we represent thousands of taxpayers, homeowners, and voters in the Clay Township. Shame on me. I worked at Clay for twelve years as assistant principal. I retired after forty-eight years in education. I stood by while South Bend schools closed Eggleston, Brown, Tarkington, Hamilton, Hay, Green, Pearlie, Kennedy, they call it now, rightsizing and consolidation. I was at Clay, and I looked around at all the other schools in South Bend that were getting funded from the monies of one of the highest tax areas in the county, Clay Township. I stood by and asked- I stood by and asked, when is our turn for improvements? When is our turn for a safe and secure entryway to protect our students? It's coming one day. It has never come. Attorney Augustino has asked repeatedly, four times, freedom of information, disclose the financials, to be transparent. No reply. We are the voices of the people, and we need your help. We fully support the resolution that's presented, and we ask for you to stand strong with us so transparency on these financial matters can be disclosed. On behalf of the thousands in Clay Township, and thank you, Ms. Drake, for your support, and Mr. Baxmeyer as well, we need your help, St. Joe County Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there are other members of Save Clay that would like to approach the microphone at this time.
Please come, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
My name is John Pachesny. I live at 18420 Crown Hill Drive in South Bend. As a homeowner and taxpayer in Clay Township, I support Peter Augustino's request that the South Bend Community School Corporation present to you a complete financial report and for you to adopt a resolution supporting a request to the State Board of Accounts to review and audit all of their accounts. The secrecy why the South Bend Community School Corporation ignores requests for releasing public financial records screams that there is a cover-up or a fear of exposing questionable financial transactions. They have denied records requests to members of the school board as well as to the general public. They have not used one portion of the referendum money on buildings that they had indicated, and Kareem Afler said at one of the last meetings that most of it was going to be spent at Washington High School. What happened to 30 buildings getting needed fare? They have burned through tens of million dollars of ESSER funds. A forensic audit needs to be requested to verify funds have been spent properly and that there is nothing going on under the table. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm Andrew Danick, 17721 Woodthrush Lane, South Bend. Teacher over 40 years, 33 of them in South Bend schools. I sent all my students, all my children, excuse me, to Clay High School, and through the Clay system and through the South Bend system. I urge you to go beyond what Mr. Augustino is asking you. He's asking you to look at it. I'm asking you to examine it. Go into detail. You get records from the South Bend schools, and everything is under generic names. It's like talking to your child. How were you tonight? Fine. Did you have a good time? Yup. What'd you do? Nothing. Did you watch TV? Yup. What program you watch? I don't know. That is not getting any answers from the South Bend schools. They have been stonewalling the public. They have been stonewalling us. All we're asking for is records, so we can see where everything is and make a good determination. I'm here representing teachers because you know why? You won't hear from teachers. Teachers in the South Bend school system are pressured not to speak up. Don't go to board meetings. You'll be in trouble. Look out. Your evaluation's coming up, yada, da-da, da-da, da-da. You guys in here, your city council people, you really need to get into the details and the meat, and where did the money actually go? Five screws, two TV sets, okay? Please, please, look into it and fully support what Peter Augustino is asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Pritchard, 5800 Summit Hill Court, Granger. South Bend schools has had a windfall of cash these last few years, and they're making bad choices. Clay and German Townships has been shouldering this burden for over 50 years now. We have no power to hold South Bend schools accountable. We're just a sleepy little, you know, Clay-German Township. We pay 40% of the taxes, but they won't show us the books. It's time to think differently. The other townships should step up. They should step up and take this burden off of our backs. Please assist us, assist our attorney. These poor kids are getting screwed out of their futures, and that affects us all, the whole county. So maybe the whole county should take care of this problem and stop leaving it to just Clay and German Township. It's immoral to continue to fund their incompetence. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Name is Paul Anassis, live at 51680 Orange Road. I am in favor of the resolution that they are proposing. I have too gone to meetings for the board of South Bend schools. I have spoken for the last year and seven months. I have asked many questions. I have asked under the Freedom of Information Act. I have not gotten hardly any answers from them. Every time I go, I talk about the referendum money, which the community has passed, and they were misled when the community asked questions, and they were misled into giving them the money, and it's, we're trying to figure out where this money's going. Every time we turn around, we're asking questions. Where's this going? Where's that going? If we understand and realize in the eight years, once this referendum is done, $220 million, plus the cares and COVID money, 700 to almost $100 million, you're almost a third of a billion dollars for a public school corporation, a third of a billion dollars. I've mentioned it many times at the board meetings, nobody seems to hear it. We really need to look into this and figure out where this money's going. That's all of our money, all of your money, the people in the audience, anybody that pays taxes are paying for this. So we do need to come together and figure this out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Marsha Hummel at 2663 Lake Shore. I served on the South Bend Community Board of Trustees for 16 years. As an elected position, I'll tell you, I am devastated. I would beg you to follow Pete's advice, because the South Bend Community School Corporation is headed in a very, very bad direction, okay? And only you can help us stop it. Soon, if you don't, you will have no great school left in this community. It's time that we stand together. It's time we look at these finances. It's time you see some of the things that are happening within that school administration building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor?
Mr. Root?
Mrs. Drake?
I just want to thank Mr. Augustino, Mr. Smith, and all the members of Save Clay for coming here tonight and making your appeal. I am a taxpayer just like you and have the same questions, and I know that there are a lot of people who want to see some accountability from the South Bend schools, the parents, the students, and the taxpayers. So thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor?
President Root, I know you're not referring to me there, but I would like to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Shetzel.
Thank you. I also, as Councilwoman Drake did, I would like to thank all those who spoke. A small part of my district also is Clay territory. And, you know, I've known for a long time, being a teacher, and having taught in the South Bend school system, there are some serious issues there. And at the same time, as Pete pointed out, they get more money per student than any other school in our area. So you have to ask the question, and I think, I think it behooves us as the council of this district, of this area, to make a strong effort to find out where has all the referendum money gone? Where has all the COVID money gone? Because I think these folks bring up some great points, and I will be standing beside them to try to get answers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, privilege of the floor is now over. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn made by Councilman Tanner. It was seconded by Mr. Morton. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Catanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that the motion to adjourn was passed by nine, vote zero. The council will be moving to the seventh floor for their budget discussion, starting at about 7:20. This meeting is adjourned.